I agree.
Everything we can to notify.
On your website, too.
I very much agree. Does that show up then on the Hotomi website?
Yes.
But so, front page?
It's in the, it'll be in the news items, then if you go into my, I have project information on my page as well.
We should at least get a banner on that.
I mean Crescent should be notified, too.
That's my thought.
I mean, they all should. I don't understand why we wouldn't.
Now, I'm proud to cut down on the pictures they're putting in there every day and put in some news.
Thank you very much.
Just irritates me.
Number out. If you use the board one, it's gonna have on there.
They could put in some news.
Or email list.
Oh, we don't have a radio station.
Alright.
We don't have anything.
What else is on our list? Is there anything that you guys have truly wanted to accomplish this year that, you know, stuff like that that you want to have happen?
Where's the, where's your, where's your, are you putting that out for bid or Hancock do?
Yeah, that, that's developing. I got a hundred percent plans review and I have an estimate. I was, need to come to you guys to get a, a letting date. You've been reviewing, we've both been reviewing the bidding documents, so that's coming along. I'll bring that back to you guys that set a letting date. When I get done with the review, I guess, on that, so.
Is this for the facility?
For the Hancock shop, yes.
But, what do you think you're gonna have to get for bids?
I, I don't know on that.
Where are we on the, bonding on local option sales tax? Are we moving forward with any of that?
What do you mean bonding on local option, option sales tax?
Well, isn't that what you were gonna consider doing?
Yeah, that was one of the plans to, to bond against local option.
We had recent discussions with Spear. She said she was gonna reach out to you, but I haven't been looped in on any.
I mean, that, that needs to have, that at least discussion needs to start before you even start putting the project out for bid, for crying out loud. I mean, we gotta have a way to pay for it, huh?
I know, write that check.
Johnson, Matt can reach out to you in the last week or so?
Uh, I haven't seen him.
I'll touch base with her. She had told me she was going to.
Okay.
Cause I, I would assume we can save on those discussions and do them all.
Are we still looking at Miami by the airport?
Well, I think they're doing some due dealing rules.
Not, not now?
No, I, I think it's only, well, there you go.
It's just on hold, okay.
I think that's, that, if that's the direction the board still wants to let John go down is using local option sales tax to pay for that building and bonding for it. I think that's, I think it's, I think it's a good idea and, if that's.
I don't care as long as it runs through the process. I mean, honestly, that's, and that's what the public's gonna say the same thing.
Which building is he talking about?
Hancock.
Oh, Hancock, yeah.
Doesn't make us any money.
Yeah, I'm all for that one.
Well, I think Spear, you know, Becky's had some, no, maybe it was Hollers and Cooney. Everybody's just kinda either swamped or, uh, working from home. They're a little.
Hollers and Cooney's just been.
Swamped.
I, just, just redemption, resolution. I just heard from somebody I've never met before, never heard from before. Didn't even know that was mine when I got an email asking about the board meeting. So, and it, it's taken me weeks to get that. We're still working on help on, of them signing off for me to bring forward those reimbursement resolutions. So I don't know what they're doing to Hollers and Cooney, but they just.
You'll work with John and Maggie on?
I'll reach back out to Maggie and ask her to have those discussions with you and what, and you'll know more what you can provide her so she can provide the board with that.
What's that?
That's why we talk. That's why we sit here and talk.
Yep.
Yes.
I know, scared I was to go down the road lots too more and we'd never needed to, but now we have.
Two hundred thousand, thank you, okay. And did that include a farm? Did it have buildings?
No, no buildings.
No buildings to take down? Okay. Do you have to fill it?
Um, minimal, yeah.
Minimal filling, okay.
I can reach out to, I can go back through my old emails and find the last one I have on that.
And I'll just touch, I have to talk to her about the Tiff one anyway, but, um.
Yeah, that.
I'll remind her, but she had told me she was gonna reach out to you again.
So, that conversation about local, local option sales tax and the urban renewal here at the courthouse. We still, we still have those other bonds to work on for the projects that we've already had the discussion and.
Pre-bond hearings.
Yeah, pre-bond hearings, John.
If I could chime in on that, Tim, I think those are ready to go and they're, they're, they were going to time them with this, the U R bonds that Matt's already working on for industrial park. But now we should make sure we pull in and loop in if there's gonna be any for John as well because any issuance at the same time, we can share costs, the movie's rating and the sale.
What, what, what was the engineer's estimate on that facility, John?
It was originally.
No.
Where we're at now.
Where we're at now?
We're, we're right around two million now on that thing.
And it was 1.7, is that ballparking?
I think we're 1.3 when we first started talking about this. The, the building itself got a little bigger than, uh, what we started out. Talked to the employees and went to store their snowplows inside and the, some of the other equipment that I hadn't accounted for, so the building got a little bigger as well.
You'll have water.
Yes.
You'll have water. That was the biggie, I know.
We give you an inch and you take a mile.
You're just not getting to know me, right?
How much is snowplows sitting out in the weather?
I mean, why would they be on the weather? I mean, they don't, we don't use them to pause snow or nothing.
He became rural and all of a sudden.
I know.
All, all of a sudden. He's an expert. I'm just teasing you.
You know, I, I fought for the rural people when I was on the board last time, too.
You were what?
I fought for the rural people.
Yeah. As a matter of fact, this is no kidding. When I was on the board last time, we levied city people to pay for the secondary roads. I think six cents, if I remember correctly.
We used to.
I think it was twelve when I took it, we took it to six.
Yeah, it's been zero for.
You could again if you wanted to.
But then if he told us once, he told us 4,553 million times that we were also levying against the city to run 911, which he didn't think was the way to do it. And, and I quoting you.
No, no, that, that was.
The city was being levy twice, that's what it was.
That was the Lauren Canouse kind of, that wasn't Tim.
Well, that wasn't Tim? Oh, I was, I swore it was you. Oh, okay, okay. I take it all back.
I would remember that.
Well.
Yeah, I know it was you because you used to talk about your address all the time.
Well, just take a look at that floor.
Yeah, that was a trouble.
Okay, so what, we have John taking care of? We have urban, urban renewal plan taken care of?
Okay, one of my roads that I just mentioned, Longview Loop, Concord Loop, Greenview, State Orchard. So we're gonna have those. Those are, I mean, they're steel coats.
What's it gonna take to get those back? Seriously, I'm asking.
At what level do you want them though? I mean, they're, they're four man paving now and if, if we move up to asphalt, I mean, we're, we're talking big expense. So we're kinda on a eight or 10 year rotation to keep them what they were.
Volks of the population that pay our taxes live in those areas and complaining about it, like, I don't care. I mean, I wanna know what it costs. I mean, seriously, especially like Longview especially. I mean, that, that's the connection point to all those neighborhoods over there and it's, you know, pretty rough.
Hopefully some of that changes, but the, I mean, we're running a million and a half a year into those now. What, I mean, do you wanna double the effort or triple? I mean, it really is.
Is that the one you're going to find your place then?
That's what I live off of.
Okay, and then it goes into the city?
Hits up with a.
Is it, or is the city on both sides of it?
It goes in on the city three or four times, I think.
The city kept annexing, you know, like forest land.
I know, I know they're doing some repair to Greenview now, right? Right. Parts of it. Yeah, so Greenview is kinda cut off by that new work. We're gonna wait a year, we're gonna come back next summer and redo Greenview because of the, just whatever the construction traffic is and what city's project is, we're gonna get tied up in that.
You can, yeah, you can. You can go across a river and win the pinehurst and come out of the.
So this year we're gonna try to do Three Bridge and, uh.
Off of Longview Loop, uh-huh, yeah.
240th?
205th?
No.
We need 240th, that's a travel road, you're naming.
No, between 92 and Greenview, uh, there's some, I can't remember which oil road in there. One of those we need to jump in and do. We did two.
230th.
Did we do 230th last year? We, I can't remember what we did last year. We did one of them last year, but there's another one.
So real short when you did, did, just the first one, it's the first one past, well, east of Greenview.
Did you do one from Chuck Ardis' old place, that one? Was that the one you did?
Uh, I believe so.
That, I think that was it. It has a big brick wall, used to have a cannon up on it.
Yeah, I think that's it.
You can't miss it.
Then we might do Greenview back to where the detour ends, then try to pick that west piece up next year, so trying to find our way through there, but.
Clear down to the fire station or?
No, just.
No, you wouldn't need to go down that.
Not at that far either.
So what are we gonna do to fix them?
You what?
What are we gonna do to get those roads fixed? What do you need from us so that you can make this happen? Contractors, money, what?
More money now.
No, well, we still.
Or rededicate your money, I guess.
Yeah, we had that conversation, um, and, um, your time, Tim brought it up, bonding, um, the lost money and stuff, but what Blackhawk did, because we haven't talked to them yet, I mean, I gave you the stuff, but when you called and chatted with them, yeah, because. What happened with the pandemic, but if we, if we go approach it from a point of, you know, what does it, what does it take? Say, I don't know if it's a mile, three miles, five miles. If we have per se a contractor look at bidding that, then, you know, that's, it is what it is.
Yeah. I don't, I have no rule of care with that guy, he doesn't.
They, that's what they, that's what they were doing, is my understanding anyway, is they were con, they were doing a hybrid. John gets some of it, but, and his people, but then they contracted some of it.
Woodbury? Are you talking about Woodbury?
Uh, Blackhawk.
Oh, Blackhawk, you said.
They've been doing that for years.
Excuse me?
Yeah.
Yes, they also have nice roads and nice bridges, too, actually. It bonded for a lot of that, which there's always that great debate there, but I, I just think that, at some point, we need to look at contracting out a lot of this so we can get it done. I mean.
I feel like the idea of bonding.
Money is what, what it's gonna come down to. We spent a million and a half on the seal coat roads. That's about 120 miles.
Two million dollars on. On Thurland's actually, if you spend two million dollars on your building, why couldn't that two million dollars not have been spent on Longview Loop to fix it? I'm, I'm just asking that.
Yeah.
Cause that's what they're gonna ask us. The people are gonna say, well, why didn't you do that? Why does he need a new building? Why couldn't we fix this dang road that we all live on?
I mean, we're, we're gonna bleed into some inefficiency. We're gonna have to do those buildings now or later, so at some point that has to be done.
I'll argue for you. I'll always do that for you, but my question is, how are you gonna get these roads figured out?
Right.
So if I, if we spend two million dollars right now and get your building up in the next year, what's your plan to get these other roads fixed? That's what I'm asking.
Right.
If you can't, I wanna know what we need to do so you do fix them.
Well, he just gave us, I don't know if all of you were listening, but I was.
He said money.
He projected 2.2 million in sales tax revenue. It's looking like it's gonna be 2.8 million, so he's got an extra $600,000 we can take from him and fix a road. I didn't miss that.
Right, but, I mean, that just does a couple miles. So you have a 110 miles. Our, our replacement's about a 12 year period, so in, in my world, that replacement schedule has to move forward, which is money, but we put, we put twice as much money into 1,100 miles of rock roads as we do 120 miles of seal coats. I mean, the, to me, we have kind of a bias towards the seal coats now, and, and I know they're not great, but for what we spend on gravel roads compared to seal coats, I don't know how you, you take money. In my world, I gotta take money from here to put it there, but if, if there's extra money, that, that works great, too, but it takes, you know, it takes four or five years to get anywhere with even, you know, an extra million dollars to get ahead. We put about a million dollars a year into bridges, so that, that's kinda how the material wise, where our money's going.
Well, I mean, those are the roads that, I mean, I pointed a lot of Lewis Central type roads, I guess, that district, but there's a substantial amount of population that live over there that just, should see the roads get fixed. And I don't, you talked about the schedule, where the hell, where, where's Longview Loop on your schedule? Isn't it even on schedule?
You live down in there, don't you?
Yeah, and now we're fixing Maryland Road, too.
We gotta get a road fixed before June 14th.
That's right. Six months.
I mean, that's not my point here. Like, you want a two million dollar building, but you said two million dollars doesn't go very far, maybe do a couple miles, while Longview Loop's only a couple miles. So, you go ask any one of those people living in that area what they want, I'm gonna tell you what their answer's gonna be. So I, I want the answer on it.
City can't, uh, force annexation anymore, right?
No, it has to be voluntary.
Except, well.
They can solve it.
Well.
No, I'm just saying, you know, that'll make it worse.
No, the only thing is, Tim.
If the, well, the city might say, oh my gosh, let's, let's annex that. We don't have to pay for the road to fix it.
Well, they've been arguing over it for years.
Well, we, we did that. That was about the first time when the guy showed up at the meeting with the, the rope and the deuce when we had the public hearing out at, uh, Lewis Central Middle School. It was, it was, it was not pretty. I never seen Tom, well, Tom gets pretty red anyway, but he got real red that day. But, um, it would have, so, and they should have taken some advantage of it. And they couldn't have probably gotten those that time, but there was times when there's, uh, pieces that got volunteered into the city where they should have took their extra, uh, 20% that they can take. And those people can try to fight that, but, you know, a lot of times it doesn't work out, but, but they get, but that's about the only way to get any additional ground in there. You know, I mean, that's just like the one they, they did that deal down at Google. I mean, there's no city road that goes to Google. You gotta go all county roads, so they're using our infrastructure to run down to their.
Yeah, 275. I mean, that, that, down by Bungie Avenue, that's real bad, that drove out.
Well, I bet the traffic on that old 275 or whatever it's called now is probably comparable to a lot of the major arteries in. I mean, the combination of cars and trucks and, and, uh, cause they've re.
I guarantee that. I guarantee that.
They've redone almost all of it from that intersection, I think, all the way back into Linwood.
Oh.
Repaved that.
Yeah, 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 it was, yeah, it's.
I don't know if they got some monies to do it, but I think it's all been re-asphalined back from whatever, what's that, Bungie Avenue, the turn?
Yeah, Bungie Avenue is the turn off of Wabash.
From there back into Linwood, I think it's all, it's all.
It's a pretty nice road.
I think it's been all blacktops.
It's a nice, you're right on target.
It's a good cycle, bro.
Fight an area. Why doesn't our road look like that?
Money?
275 is another one, though. I mean, that, that one's getting, it's getting crap kicked out of it, which maybe we don't mess with that till we get all this other construction done, but, you know, cause I'm, you look at, uh, this neighbor that we're talking about, Pioneer Trail, I mean, those dirt trucks are coming down Pioneer, they're beating hell out of Pioneer Trail and they're beating 275. So I don't know on that, but.
We had a hard time with the tax levy this year, remember, because of the falling values. It was, it was tough. The budget was really, really tough for the rural part. We argued and argued and argued over that, so. He's not, not getting the money we'd like to give him.
Yeah, it's, it's like I said, man, you're sitting on a pot of money you wanna spend that could be used for that other purpose, so.
He's trying to make it work.
But, you're, you're doing a good thing. It's just, we're put in a position that we got answered for you and it's very difficult to do that if you don't have a plan for this other stuff. I wanna know what that plan is. Maybe you don't have an answer today and that's fine. I just want you to think about what that's gonna be. I wanna know soon.
Right, so playing with the current money or playing with more money or, or what?
Any money. I don't care. I wanna know what your plan, like, how are you gonna fix some of these roads, you know? We're gonna keep letting them deteriorate to the point that they go to like what Greenview looked like this year? I mean, right at State Orchard and Greenview, I mean, that was, that was a disaster. And then it was the city and county pointing fingers at each other, well, it's county road, well, it's city here. I mean, that was horrible. Our road should never get to that point, ever. So, what are we gonna do to make that not happen? And you say more money, fine, but I want that money to be targeted and pointed at something, you know? Maybe we do this urban renewal plan that frees up some of our money, then maybe we kick a few million over to you to fix some of those roads. You gotta be able to tell us what your plan's gonna be with it, otherwise, what's the point?
So, John, I hate to put you on the, on the spot, but if you have $6 million in your secondary road fund, how much is that spoken for?
Um, none.
Huh?
The fund balance you're talking about?
Yeah.
Oh, what's left?
Oh, six million.
I don't remember how you projections and, and we still have the last transfer, too.
Because you were rat hauling some money for.
Right.
Trying to parlay off the.
The facilities were paid for out of fund balance at one point, so fund, if, yeah, we figure out the local option, if that's being bonded for, then that frees up the balance also, so there's.
So there, so we can contract for some of that.
Work. Right, if, if we bond, then yeah, we can bring that out. If, if I have a clear path to find those funds, so if we get that.
Are you against bonding in rural?
No.
No. Is, is anybody on our board? I mean, no, I know we talked about it and then we dropped it. Then we talked about it and then we dropped it.
Are you talking about? For what? Like, for roads, you mean, or?
For roads, yeah.
No, I'm not against it. I, we gotta be careful how we do it, but yeah, I'm.
I, I know.
Blackhawk's the model.
I, I think that's how we should look at this to help him out.
The hard part is your.
How do you think about bonding?
$900,000 limits on it, though, right?
For rural.
On the web?
Right.
Bonding.
To a certain extent, it's good.
Yeah, me too, yeah.
I think there, there's something different with the roads.
If, if we bond against local option, we don't have the $900,000.
So the limitations depend on what the purposes are.
Guess what we'd bond against rather than a tax levy, is that what you're saying? Okay, alright.
You know, I, I am a little against bonding for roads.
I knew, I knew somebody was.
Because to pay, to put it on the debt levy, that means people in Council Plus and Carter Lake are paying for secondary roads, too.
But we're discussing using local option tax to pay them.
But if we do the local option sales tax way.
Local option, yeah.
Okay.
Man, we eliminate that issue.
Okay, alright.
Because you bond for the roads, you don't have to pay them back with debt service. That's what you're saying, and that's what.
Yes, that's exactly what I'm saying.
And we have that option.
Okay, I'm done beating up on you, John, but yeah, I do want you to figure that out. Is there anything else?
Cause if we only put like a pin or a nickel on the road, then we can only fix the road in Barrett's house.
Never seen such a big city in my whole life.
I'll show you on the nicest house.
I've been fixing your road in the city for quite a while.
I don't think I've ever seen such a big city in my whole life.
Oh, I don't know.
On the roads, there, there is a project I would like to see taken care of and, and put on the table to, for intense discussion, and that's the.
My way.
Road between Mc, uh, Old Highway 6 and New Highway 6 to open up the, uh.
Well, we've been talking about the Three Bridge road.
Yeah, and get, so, so we can get some of that traffic off of Three Bridge.
Thought we were gonna do that anyway.
Well, we are. We haven't moved forward with trying to.
We got, we, yeah, we, the landlord, landlord, I mean, I don't know if you wanna try condemnation or not, but the landlord is, uh, you know, not real.
They're renting that one, aren't they? Property that we need to, to get?
Can you identify that property, John?
What you're saying, are we talking about from, uh, back to Three Bridge or are we talking from Three Bridge to Highway 6? Because there's some developed property for sale out there also.
I said Highway 6, not Old 6 to.
Three Bridge.
To Three Bridge.
So we have Coder Farms Airport and don't really know where that thing's gonna land, so we're, we, we gathered the survey on that through the winter, uh, so we, we can go into design on that one, but.
I'm sorry, I, I'm sorry.
Know what I missed.
Backing up the roads.
So we got the survey information on that one, so we can go into design, but it's not programmed or, or funded at this point. I don't know how to pay for it.
How much is that?
Probably gonna be three and a half million.
Perfect, so we got, we had 6 million in there. We're gonna bond for the building, that's 2 million.
Can, can I throw a wrench in there, though?
Now, we, so, so then we have three and a half, we can use that, uh, carryover for the road.
Right. Can I add on now? So, there is also that development property for sale between Three Bridge and Highway 6, right at the end of the golf course, so if that goes to development and we make them connect 6 and, McPherson, we just took care of it on somebody else's dime. We, we saw the same, pretty much the same problem there. We, we got traffic off Three Bridge by doing that. So, there's also a whole nother solution out there on a developer that we don't know is coming or not coming.
How long would we know until that happens?
Twenty, twenty sixty?
No, it's probably, it's probably more econ, economic, you know, what the economy's gonna do and, and something like that.
Running water, I guess.
Because, because it's so close, it's so close in, and you got the hard surface of 6, it's.
Yeah, it's almost another phase of inventory.
Yeah.
It's right there.
You got, you got a couple, uh, well, there's one on the planning and zoning subject, another couple lots going out there next Wednesday on the planning and zoning deal, right by the Coder deal. Out there, so there's gonna be, let's see, something, well, eleven, so you're probably gonna be somewhere around four or five million out there in those eleven lots.
Is that Eastern Hills? Is that where you are?
This is Longview, right?
Oh, Longview.
Oh, right there in the middle of the road, on the frigging Google maps.
That's an old, that's been fixed.
Shit.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I think that, uh, although we don't have final approval from the airport authority, they're at least a willing partner or willing to consider.
Yeah.
That road. I think we should move forward with that, too.
I can take that one to preliminary design and get an estimate on that one. You wanna go that far on it? Probably sync another.
Which one you talking about? Coder, by Coder up?
By Coder's, yes.
Yeah, absolutely.
Probably put, I don't know, 60,000 in that to get that developed that far. That's not a huge expense, at least we'll get an estimate.
Is that the gully you were talking about where you wanna take a hill down and fill the gully?
No, it's on the opposite side, so, on the east side of the airport.
East side, okay.
Back towards Three Bridge, so yeah, there's some pretty.
So he had $600,000 more in tax revenue this year than he budgeted for. So if we take 60 out of it to pay for that study, he still has 540 left. You guys never see the, never mind.
Well, I, I don't know about alcohol with that, John. Yeah, let's do it then.
Road use case?
Road use?
I think you're talking about local option, right?
Oh, okay.
Tim's been looking at my shelves.
Yeah, move forward that one. I think you should move forward that one.
Okay, I'll, I'll bring that one to development. We'll get to estimate, then we'll talk about how we're gonna pay for it.
Sounds good. I like it. Fix Longview Loop. Mass got messed up. Okay, anything else?
No, I, I did, I just think probably, I don't know if it's the second week.
John, is that the gully you're talking about on the east side of the runway?
July back and win. Win, I know you guys have cut off.
And whose land is that?
Uh, Coder has that.
It is Coder.
You, you cut off everybody from expenditures.
We, we cut off towards the last week of June.
Okay.
And we'll get all our stragglers due until June 30th.
Right, so.
Expenses are done as of June 30th. What we weighed on and the reason why we don't tell you those, I don't have the cash report ready or the fund balances for you, is the treasurer still has to apportion and end the year before we, because numbers change after July 1st for them.
So when, when can we expect the treasurer to?
It's usually within a week, usually. Second week of July, for sure, we'll have numbers.
Okay, so, so sometime. Sometime in the, second week of.
I was gonna say about July, like, July 12th or so.
So the second week, the week of, say, July 14th.
I would hope, yep.
Maybe know where we ended the year at.
The treasurer tells us she's done, then we have good numbers.
Okay, and then, and then can you tell me at that point, my, um, expenditures and revenues for 2019 versus 2020? And then I'm gonna want those snapshots going forward. twenty nineteen versus twenty twenty, and then I'm gonna want those snapshots going forward.
And we can, what we've been doing, and we can share this with you too, is we'll look at when we budgeted and projected in March, how we thought we would end the year on June thirtieth, and then we'll show you how we actually ended the year June thirtieth. So you'll know, you know, this is what the, what you were, your financial feel was for the twenty twenty-one year, and we're either better after these last several months of unknowns, or we're not as, as well as we planned, but we'll know, we'll, we'll tell, we'll show you how those looked.
That's right.
I'm, I'm really curious how to see how it is due.
I've talked to two departments, and um, those two combined, they're turning back in a total of two hundred thousand dollars. Um, the auditor should be turning back money. Um, nobody's been traveling, nobody's been spending any, so, I, I don't know.
Yeah, the election before you're in one of those.
Yeah, there's always fraud.
But there was, there was savings in other places.
You're getting twenty thousand back, you might all get the Longview Loop all the way up to Maryland's Drive-In.
She would love that.
And Tim's right, when I had the discussions with the departments before we planned this amendment for next week, I was worried about the COVID expenses and a lot of them, although they had, those expenses, they had other things that they didn't do, and, and they didn't need the amendment because of it. So they, they all were comfortable that their, their budgeted figures were still gonna be okay. So I'm.
And also keep in mind that the board give.
Oh, yeah.
Give Matt two hundred and fifty thousand, and he hasn't spent that either. So.
He hasn't spent it all, you mean?
He hasn't spent it all, no.
He's spending.
He's spent some.
Yeah.
But he's worked his tail off and he's got grants to cover some of those costs too.
I understand.
So even, even though, you know, the COVID costs some revenues on the gaming side, and maybe some sales tax revenue, I think all of our departments did another good job this year, and I, I think we're gonna be in fine shape, so.
I'm optimistic as well.
Hey, where we go? Cause this was on our agenda last night, uh, A T V, U T V ordinance.
Yeah.
So is there, you gave us copies of that.
You guys should have.
No, you gave us copies, I'm getting at, did you want to see any significant changes that you need to make to it before you throw it on the agenda?
I was hoping that we'd get John's opinion on it. Did you take a look at it?
Yeah, yeah, he.
Did you make any changes to it?
Yeah.
There, I can't remember what it was.
I don't know what his changes are.
Yeah.
I don't remember what they were, it's pretty minor.
You changed the foreign markets within those communities under five thousand.
So, yeah, you have joint jurisdiction through uh, cities under twenty-five hundred, so pretty much everybody but Council Plus, you could, you have half the authority on the foreign market route, so do you want the A T Vs to be able to go through Underwood on the foreign market route, which would be, you know, G thirty, railroad highway and Third Street?
The alternative is to tell them to park their A T V on the gravel road and walk.
I, well, I don't know, how, how are we gonna get around the city jurisdiction?
They're doing it now, so.
I tell you, since we started talking about this and getting all those emails, I've seen more of them on the road than, I'm not kidding. They're all over anyway.
I don't, you know, here's the thing, they have to register, right?
Yeah.
I mean, there's new revenue source there if we do this, that we didn't have before. So I, I mean, obviously why is this a bad thing?
At least, I just wanna make sure that, that it's, that John's had a, had a chance to take a look at it, did Jeff have a? Our sheriff have a chance to take a look at it?
Yeah.
He, he did?
I thought he did.
Yeah, I don't know his honest opinion on it yet, but.
But it's not a nine-one-one by any means, I mean, I don't, I just wanted to get it out, I've been, I mean, probably for the last three years, I've, these people have approached me on this day. You know.
You can thank Justin James for the ten thousand emails.
I mean, this is the first time it's ever been brought up.
But it's, but it's, but it's, they're out there and they're operating, and they're not operating really, I don't wanna say not legally, but, you know, I think if we create this and they have to have the insurance, and they have to have a driver's license and those things, and from an enforcement standpoint, and from an educational standpoint, from a safety standpoint, it's just a lot cleaner than just letting them run road like they are now. Cause there's counties around us that, they're coming across county lines and, you know, I mean, I, if it, if it becomes uh, an enforcement or it becomes an issue, then I'd say we disband or eliminate the ordinance and move down the road. But I, I don't see them going away, I just see those.
So you're gonna, are you gonna get uh, Jeff's opinion and have, have him take a look at it and then make some changes, whatever John did, and then bring it back, and we'll take a look at it, I've been perfectly fine with that.
Yeah, I don't know, yeah, I mean.
Okay, Scott, you can.
I can do that.
Alright.
Okay, any questions in your turn?
Okay.
All their two thousand, alright?
Alright.
Bye.